All right, I'd like to welcome everybody here to the March 12th meeting of the Alexander County Board of Education. And I would like to commend everyone for being 55 minutes early, if you look at the clock on the wall. So promptness is always a great attribute. At this time, I would like to recognize Jeremiah Bennett from Sugarloaf Elementary. Jeremiah's the son of Doug and Crystal Bennett, and he will lead us in our pledge.
Attention, so we pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, young man.
Thank you.
Okay, fellow board members, you have the agenda. Could I get a motion regarding approval?
No need.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, honors and recognitions, at this time I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Heffner.
Board member Sean, will you help me with the first presentation?
You can sing a song for some.
We have two awards to be presented this evening, and I am honored to be a part of both celebrations. The first award will be going to West Alexander Middle School. We are pleased to recognize West Alexander for the designation as a school to watch in North Carolina. The official letter notifying the school of the award reads as such. "West Alexander Middle School demonstrates academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity, and organizational structures that support the success of your students. Based on West Alexander Middle School's designation, application, and site visit, many strengths were noted, including a positive and caring learning environment where students' developmental needs are emphasized, focused commitment to professional development dedicated to enhancing student growth, numerous extracurricular opportunities for students such as clubs and enrichment, and a student-centered culture where high expectations for all students is the norm. The designation is for a three-year cycle and is awarded through the National Forum to accelerate middle grades reform. And if I understood correctly, last week during the awards ceremony, that was held in Greensboro by the way, there are only 40 middle schools in the state with this designation. Is that correct? Wow. This honor is a result of great leadership and a lot of hard work. Congratulations are extended to all the students and staff at West Alexander Middle School. A job very well done."
Morning, Ms. Gray. Morning, Ms. Gray, are you part of this team too? Are you invited? I invited Ms. Curtis couldn't be here this evening, she has a sick child. I also invited Mr. Evans, who's with his son, coaching talent at Mr. Palmer. And I just say, I've been blessed to have lots of assistant principals, outstanding staff over the last few years, and they do all their hard work and efforts they did. Children first each and every day. So I think it says I pray things about staff and people. I've been blessed to be surrounded by us our middle school for the last seven years. Thank you for this level of support as well as the support of the Board of Education. Y'all make our jobs a lot easier, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Another round of applause. Chairman Odom, would you come help me with the second award? Alexander Central High School senior Nathaniel Alexander, better known as Nate when we see each other at Food Lion, applied for the vacant seat that was recently filled on the Board of Education. Although he was not eligible due to the age requirement of 21, and he is only 18, we are proud of his willingness to serve our schools and community. Board Chairman David Odom will say a few words and present a token of recognition for your initiative and desire to serve.
Daniel, if you'll come on up. Congratulations, first here. Okay, you'll just stand here just a little bit. As a matter of fact, you go sit in my seat. Beware. Okay, I would like for everyone to recognize Chairman Alexander of the Alexander County School Board. So, you know, it's amazing you can register to vote at 18, register for the draft at 18, all those triggers at 18. And of the 300 and some seniors that are at the high school, I imagine there was less than five, maybe less than three, that had any idea that there was a vacancy on the school board. So don't let the statute be a stumbling block. Let your courage be a stepping stone. You know, I admire young folks that don't always have their face buried in their phone. And I'm an MVP shopper at Food Lion. You know, and it resonates when you can observe someone from afar. And, you know, I see your keenness to detail in your profession and your work. And there's plenty of time for you, because the most rewarding thing you can do is be a public servant. And you exemplify, just in your attitude and your candor, and moreover, your grit and determination, what public service is all about. Because it's not always about the pedigree, and it's not always about the wall dressed. A lot of times, it's about the heart. And your application to be considered to be nominated to the board, that was all hard, and you do have a body of work that is exemplary for an 18-year-old. So one day you will see it in a chair just like that.
I don't know, it may be in the chair right beside of yours. He's the only student of the date that I've ever met in the four and a half years that I've served as superintendent who looked at me and said, "One day I want your job." So, um, one day you can have it Nathaniel.
Let's give Nathaniel another round of applause.
He's heading on out, he's going back to work. I will not be at Food Lion tonight. Do you need any more pictures, Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Well, do you want the board chair and vice chair? Oh, good, okay. Oh, good luck arranging us. One day you might want to do one more, because when the bunny ears went out, I went...
Did anybody sign up for the public comment? Nobody signed up for the public comment, okay. Okay, you have before you the consent agenda. Have a motion regarding consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this time we will recognize Mr. Kerry Cash, Sugarloaf Elementary, school update.
Chairman Odom, Dr. Heffner, board members, thank you for the opportunity to come to tell a little bit about the good things happening at Sugarloaf School again. First thing we'll talk about, we'll talk about kindergarten. Kindergarten has changed drastically over the years. I believe, I was thinking back, I believe that public school kindergarten started around 1973 or 1974, something like that. And for some reason, they started the year that my group went in the first grade. So there might have been a reason for that, get us out of the way for the start. But kindergarten students come to us in a variety of ability levels now. Some can draw letters, count uppers to 100 more, can even start to read, and others have never looked in a book, never done anything like that. So we have the challenge of providing services for all the students. This year, our kindergarten teachers mentioned, said, "We will try something different. We will try to do some team teaching along the way in kindergarten, and we want to work together." And at first, I was a little hesitant about that. I thought about 43 kindergarten students in the same room. Even if you have two teachers and two teacher assistants, that's a big bunch altogether. But sometimes as a principal, you have to trust your effective teachers and listen to them, and let them try things that they want to try in the classroom. So we are doing that. The best way I can describe, if you walk in the classroom and see us, it's a control, bar, and Bailey, three red circles. But on that, kids are learning, so that's what we're after. First picture there, we have the teacher going over, working with identifying, beginning of the word sounds, learning beginning reading things that they'll build on later on in their studies. The second picture there is a computer, we have a thing called reading aids. Part of their transition, they move around different centers. One is a technology center, and they have actually a pre-test and a post-test, so we can tell how far they go from one to another. Okay, here, we have a teacher working with math skills. Now they're working on number bonds. They used to, we, two plus two is four, but now they add the parts to make up the whole. Over here on the second slide, the teacher assistant is assessing students to make sure she is keeping up with the other students, and nobody's falling behind. Okay, next slide. Recently, we've had Dr. Sue's family night, and we tried to do things that would get parents involved and spend time with their children at school. The first slide there, they're doing a game, it's a counting game that the students are having to answer questions, but they're having to count to move forward and win the prize. And then the girls on the right there, they're working on a group project. Next slide. Here, we have a parent and child involvement. I believe the girls on the left are working on their writing skills. And then the parent on the right, he's helping his child, I believe that's a kindergarten student, working on identifying words and all the beginning sounds. All right, so earlier in the year, our K-2 teachers participated in Orton Gillian Hand training, and some of the things that I asked the teachers, "What did you benefit out of that?" It helped us to teach students visual, auditory, and tactile ways of learning. On the left there, we have sand trays that the teacher will call out the letter sound, and the students have to use their fingers to write the letter in the tray. So they're getting to do something with their hands. And on the left, on the right here, the teacher is calling out the letter, and then the students have to tell her the sound. Okay, next. Mid in the school year, around January, the teachers and I noticed that some are grade levels, we did feel like they were trying and giving their best effort when we had eye ready tests or eye read assessments and the mid-tracks, and we thought we had to do something, we had to see what's going on here. Why are they not being motivated? So one thing we did is we had a data chat. In my days, it wasn't a data chat, anything like that. My mom worked at the high school I was at, the teacher told her, we went home, we had a chat if I wouldn't give my best effort. But if you look on here, you have, I listed things on the left. There are two assessments, and the child can mark their score on the two bars on the left. One thing I was going to say is we tried to have every parent do this with their child at home. And some parents couldn't, or possibly they just wouldn't. So we provide, tried to provide somebody at school that would work with the child, and it might be the counselor, it might be the structure coach, it might be a PE teacher, community teacher, somebody they could have to go over with to help them improve and motivate them to do better. On, you have two things, you have a typical growth and stretch growth. Typical growth is what they should be able to make by the end of the year, how much they improve. Their stretch growth is what they're going to try to do to exceed that, to go beyond what is expected of them. On the right column, you have places for, that list their strengths, then it's a place for them to write down what they need to improve on, and then moving on to developing goals for this year, and a plan on how I'm going to get there. So we're hoping that's going to pay dividends for the end of the year and make things better. We just, we're taking our mid-track assessments this week, and we've already seen a better effort and a better attitude about trying to do better and make things better. And I've invited Liz Cronin, a fifth grade teacher, to come and join us, and she even went beyond that. She went to survey to her students on what makes you want to succeed, what's going to motivate you, and I want her to share some of the results, some very interesting things.
It's on the next slide. Thank you for having me. I do the data chats with my students, and that's great for them to see their growth, but how do I get them to go further and to motivate? Some of my kids are really easy to motivate, and most students, some are. You know, they're happy to please, but what do you do with the ones that aren't? We have clip-up or class dojos or a box candy, but does that work with all of our students? I couldn't tell. So I used a little survey, and these were just two students that stuck out in my mind, like, "I don't know what to do with these kids." Struggling with what to do, and the one that's in the further side, very surprising, and you can see it's overwhelming adult approval. And this is one of the kids that isn't going to really pay attention for me, isn't going to do very well, but all he wants is adult approval and peer approval. And he wouldn't have, you wouldn't have looked at him and not known that. Another child, the consumable rewards, you can see he doesn't care what I tell him. I can tell him, "Great job," it doesn't matter. But if I gave him a piece of candy, that's all that matters. So it was interesting to me that you have, sometimes what you think is going to motivate a student isn't necessarily what it is. And if you use the right motivation, then you get a lot out of them. The other piece that I did was intrinsic. I can't just keep giving and dangling the candy, because, you know, in our jobs, it's not there. You have to feel it inside. And I was a very intrinsically motivated, I wanted to do well. It wasn't anybody telling me to, and some of my students are. But I took an article with the help of our instructional coach, Andrew Pennell, and we broke it up, and it talks about apathy in school and how do we change that? And I had them complete it with a parent. So some of the questions were geared to parents, like, "Do you get bored in your job? What do you do in that job when you get bored? What do the kids do?" And talked back and forth with the parents to see what they would do. And in a real-life situation, what do you do when you're bored? Can you just daydream? And interesting, some of the answers, parents, some of the parents said, "Well, ask my boss for an extra job or more responsibility." And that gave a great starting point for the kids to talk about it. I had some who said, "I quit my job to find something different." So those are the kids that I know I have to kind of maybe a little and say, "Look, this is how we handle situations, and how do we go further with that?" All my students, three-quarters of my students did do it with a parent. I did have a handful that either liked it at home or just didn't have somebody to deal with. So we had staff at school that did, and did answer those questions and sit with the kid and read the pages and go through it. So it was really interesting to see, even the ones that didn't do with a parent, they were able to have some really good insight and conversations with an adult about what do you do when you're bored? Or what do you do when you don't want to do your job? So that helped build that intrinsic. Like Mr. Cash said, mid-year, we were dropping off, they were gone. So I was trying to show them that even in your job, no matter what you want to do, you have to be motivated to do that. And that leads to my last little word is, this is my philosophy and pretty much Sugarloaf, is that you can tell somebody and they forget it. If you involve them in it, they're going to learn. And my goal is for them to learn what the future's going to be, and in the real world. We, I can teach them the material, but I want them to go out and be successful and strive to get the job that they want. I have two that want to be mechanics, and I keep doing it every day. Okay, come on. And one day, we were doing a math lesson, and I called Sigma and I said, "Okay, how much is an oil change? How much is an inspection?" To try to build in that real world, to involve them and encourage them to keep those dreams alive and grow, because I see growth. We just got to push it along a little bit, so.
All right, finishing up, I always want to highlight some of our community involvement. At the first year, last year, we had free breakfast in our schools for everybody, and this year, we unfortunately, there's some grants around where we could not have that. So I had some parents on the parent advisory and some local community members, they said, "Okay, what will it take for us to provide free breakfast for everybody?" So, three of our churches have got together and they've put together a fund, and we called it the Breakfast Club. I think there was some movie about that, somewhere along the line. But that was, that's what sort of came to mind. And usually, each day, we have about 75 students eat breakfast, and about 20, well, I will say 20, I put 20, 25, but around 20 students take advantage of free breakfast every day. Now, of course, your free introduced lunch are already going to get free breakfast. But that's something they'll take advantage of, and we have the community support to pay for that, because they want everybody to have free breakfast if they want it. And the last thing, we have sort of expanded on this from last year. Last year, we had artists of residence with the Hennite Center, and this year, we put things together, we put our art allotment and some funding for PTO and from the Hennite Center, and we were able to come up with 14 weeks that will have artists of residence, and students will have art every other week. So they'll have art seven times from where we started until the end of the year, well, about integrated test time. So we try to do that for the kids. Again, parents thought that was very important to supplement that in instruction, and they're for that, so PTO got on the ball to increase that, to make it longer, I guess. Any questions that you have?
Sounds like it's going great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cash.
I was going to invite you, on March 21st, 22nd, we'll have our wax museum, our ornate. And I know you've came before, and that's something great to come see at our school. The students do a great job with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cash. At this time, we'll recognize Ms. Macy Jones, our Head Start Director, for her 2017-2018 annual report.
Good evening, Chairman Odom and Board. I'm here tonight just to give you a quick overview of the 2017-2018 annual report that I'm required to create every year just to show what we've done with our outcomes from the previous year. I did have, I do have some hard copies, if you want a hard copy, and I will have a few extras if anyone in the audience would like. If we run out, I'll make one if someone wants to see one, but it will be posted on our Alexander County Schools website. I'm not going to go over everything in the report. If you have questions, just stop me and I'll address that. But there are several different headings that talk about the budget, the expenditures, where most of our budget goes to the different categories that it goes to. You can see our national classroom assessment scores. I commented on that several months ago, and our scores are above the national average. Race and ethnicity is there. You can see a background of the families that we serve, as well as their type of eligibility, whether they are above the poverty guidelines, below the poverty guidelines, their status as homeless. We have 16 children that we serve that are considered homeless, and we have 14 children during that time that were considered as foster children. Family information is there as well. You can see how many families we've had that were working. We did serve some active-duty military families, we had four. And then we had veterans. And we do serve children who have parents or someone in the family who is incarcerated. So Head Start works with the whole family. So it may be that we set up something to where that family member that is incarcerated can receive some of that child's work, so that that parent can stay involved in that child's life while they are incarcerated. You can see the family education, we do have people with advanced degrees. And then one number that concerns me is those with less than a high school education. We had 36 people, or 34.95 percent. And so that's where our family advocates become involved. And they get with those parents, and they say, "Are you interested in pursuing your GED? And how can we help you get that education?" On the next page, you have the ages of the children that we serve, served, and the breakdown, and then disability services. We serve 21, or 18.58 percent of our children had some type of disabilities, and then you see the breakdown of those disabilities. We sent 65 children, 57.52 percent, we sent those to kindergarten, or they were eligible to go to kindergarten. That's a pretty good number from what we serve. In the middle column, health nutrition services. So you can see all of the services that we are required to track. Our children get dental exams, we're required to follow up to make sure that they have a medical home or a medical provider whenever they leave the program. You can see the children that entered with Medicaid or with CHIP, some kind of insurance, the number that left with insurance. And then in the middle, you see the number of breakfasts and lunches that we serve. We served 20,371 breakfasts and 20,904 lunches in 1718. Staff information, teacher certification. Right now, we have nine people who are taking college classes in Head Start. So they're working towards their BK degrees and licensure certifications, associate degrees. So there's always somebody always going to school. We have a TNTA budget to help with those expenses. Then you see to the far right, family services rendered, and how we have worked with families. All of these topics were covered in some way or another. That is through parent activities, through having community partners come in, but all of these services were provided. But all of these services were provided. And the last two things that I have listed are at-large partners. And this is not all-inclusive this. This is just a few of the people that we partner with, our agencies that we partner with. And we do run A-Buses every day. Compliances and standards, those are the people that we have to answer to, including the Board of Education. Do you have any questions for me? Yes?
Just for edification, what is the Father Engagement Program under Families? I'm just curious what that was.
The Father Engagement Program, I'll give you an example. We have one thing that we call Dude Day at the Rock. And that is where the children in our program can just bring that father figure to Rocky Face. And we set up a trail and different stations. And so that is that child's day, just with that significant male in his or her family. So we do some kind of activities to engage our males in our programs. But we do family engagement all the time. If you look at our Facebook page, you'll see some family engagement activities on there. But we just try to do things that are of interest to the fathers. There should be this spring coming up, the free day where they get to go trout fishing at Ellendale at the pond. We'll send something home. We'll talk about the free fishing poles that they get. And we encourage the families and the fathers to take their children and go to those things.
I think it's rather telling that of the hundred children that you serve, thirty of those children are either in a foster child environment or homeless. I mean, most folks can't fathom that.
That may, that number, you're right, you're right. And then under McKinney-Vento, homeless is a pretty broad definition. It can be families who are doubling up, living with other family members. And sometimes our families don't consider themselves homeless. It's not sleeping under a bridge or out in the park. It's just that you don't have your own place with your own address, your own physical location. Anything else?
Questions of Ms. Jones? We appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
If you'd like to lay that in your stamp, please.
Okay, I think I'm next.
Yes, you are.
Okay. All right, so the next thing that I have is every year, we have to produce outcome data. And that shows the gains that our children have made. And you should have received a sheet that looks more like this. Except mine's all more, yours is a lot more. And it has the outcome data. And I put together a little chart. And what we do every year is we use something called Teaching Strategies Gold. And in Teaching Strategies Gold, it is broken down into different domains. And those domains tell us about widely, widely-held expectations. Those are skills and abilities and things that three- and four-year-old children should be able to do and should be able to accomplish at this point in their life. So it's broken down into different domains. You have social, emotional, and we have indicators in each domain. Physical, language, cognitive, literacy, and mathematics. So if you just look at the chart, and I'm not going over every one of those, the blue is our fall-to-winter data. And that shows the growth for our children. So from the time our children came in, in the fall, until we did our first checkpoint in the winter, they had seven point six growth points in each one of these indicators, in social, emotional. The orange is the data from winter to spring. They grew another eight points. So by the end of the year, in social, emotional, our children had grown a total of fifteen point six points in social, emotional. The second one is physical. And that little orange bar, I don't know what I did on the PowerPoint, but that is not right. That should be three point five to show, it should be right up there closer to the blue bar to show that they grew three point five points for a total gain of seven point two points for the year. In language, our children grew a total, it's the gray bar. In language, our children grew a total of twelve point one points for the whole year. This is three-year-old data. And in cognitive, they grew a total of fourteen point two points. And then the next slide should go to literacy. Now literacy is where they've shown the most growth. Twenty-two point two points for yearly growth in literacy. But we really focus a lot on literacy, a lot, with our Raising a Reader. We have reading partners coming in. We have the Read Across America Day. So somebody is always in the classrooms, reading to our children. And in mathematics, fourteen point four points. And on your sheet, you can see the percentage of children that grew. Ninety-seven percent, eighty-eight percent, ninety-one percent. So what we focus on in math is we say, oh, they had fourteen point four yearly growth points, but only eighty-eight percent of those children were meeting or exceeding. So then we break it down by classroom. And we say, so why did classroom A's children do better in math than classroom B's children? And then we have those discussions in our professional development meetings so that we can say where do we need to do better. So if you go to the growth for the four-year-olds, and basically, you can see that the growth in the gray for the four-year-olds, how well they did with social, emotional. Because we have children, some of whom have never been away from home. This is their first experience, being away from grandma and grandpa's house. And they have been the center of attention. So this is a big deal, when they can come into the classroom and learn how to function well with about sixteen to seventeen other children. So there's lots of growth in social, emotional, with eighteen points. And let's go on over to cognitive. That is the last one, thirteen point nine yearly, nine points of growth. And then, of course, the next slide would be literacy, twenty-two point nine points again in literacy. And seventeen point two points in math for the four-year-olds. So we use this data for different things and for different reasons. And we look at it and we analyze it and we say, what can we do better? And why are some children performing better in some areas than others? So when people say that, oh, y'all just play with them, I just want you to know, we do get offended. Because they are learning through their play. And zero, birth to three is one of the most critical, is the most critical period for brain development and brain growth. So we have them during those years, with early Head Start to Head Start. So y'all defend us if anybody says they just play. It's just daycare. No, we are not. We are busy. We are doing something. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Ms. Renee Mead, the Director of Communications and Public Information for a school facility update.
Good evening.
Evening.
I know in our last meeting, we briefly discussed that we had participated in a webinar that day. And since then, we've done quite a bit of work on that. And I wanted to give you an update. The webinar was Visitor Access to School Facilities and Use of School Facilities by Outsiders. Our leadership team and principals have discussed areas that we will be addressing from this webinar. The content in the webinar pertains to multiple different areas. But the ones that I will be addressing specifically tonight are those with our school facilities, the community uses facilities, which is our policy fifty-thirty. Now, our policy is saying, there's, based on the webinar and even the samples that they sent to us, we look good. Where the issue is, or where we want to strengthen what we're doing is in our procedures, the regulations, and then, of course, the implementation of our policy. And to give you an example of one of the areas that we need to have a change in, is the application of the different groups. I think it's Section Two and Section Three, which would be our PTOs, our booster clubs, school-related groups, and then county agencies. Now, historically, we have not required them to file the paperwork, the actual application, nor have we required them to present their certificate of insurance. And that is something that, in the webinar, they indicated that is a common practice in a lot of places. Because most of us make the assumption that a PTO is part of the school. But it's not. And so for us to consistently apply our policy, then we have to require all of those groups, every booster club, every PTO, and even the county agencies when they use our facilities. And that includes the rec teams. So that is going to be a huge amount of applications and paperwork that will be required with this change. Now, we have, we had a finance meeting with PTOs and boosters on February the twenty-sixth, I believe. And we discussed that with those that were in attendance, which I think we had a representative from every school, and we had several principals there. We also discussed this during our principal's meeting. And then Dr. Heffner and I had a meeting with Mr. French and Ms. Presnel with REC and went through all of the requirements that we're going to need to change. Now, it's not something that we'll be up and running with tomorrow, but it is something that we are encouraging the schools to go ahead and review every, all of their users and be prepared when they have new requests to comply with these new regulations or the regulations the way we need to apply them. Overall, I think it was well-received by everybody. They understood, it makes sense. So we will be following those procedures. Now, I did, in your packet, attach a few things. The first one is the webinar. And I'm not sure, you probably already have that, that was sent out by Deborah back last month.
We viewed it on February twelfth. It was the day of the board meeting, is how I can remember that.
So you should have a copy of that. But then also, I have included a link to the current documents, which can also be found on our website, under the Community tab. School Facility Use, it's always there. And some of the things that I have listed and attached are our user agreement, the sample of the certificate of insurance, our general regulations governing community use, our community schools fee structure, which you guys approved the continuation of that last month. And then the Community Use of Facilities policy. So we don't need to do anything with our policy, nor our fee structure. The regulations, I think we have, we reviewed those. And there's not anything in the regulations that we need to change. It's really just the procedure and how we follow it. And requiring those certificates of insurance. So we have a lot of them, but happy to do it.
Are those certificates of insurance, is that something that some of the rec teams would already have and we've just not required to have the documentation? Or is this going to be new to all of them?
Well, we learned a lot. And when we met with John Presnel and Mr. French, I learned that each of our communities have their own recreation communities.
Board.
Boards. And so all of those rec teams do not fall under the insurance of the county, which was the assumption that we had because we had always worked with Mr. Presnel and he had provided the rosters and the information, the gains, the competitions. And so now we know that each of those boards will have to get their own insurance. And if they're not incorporated, then they will have to also do what you have to. So it will be some work on their part also.
But the one thing that we have to remember is that this practice is commonplace among the majority of other school systems in the state of North Carolina, moreover, in the United States of America. So requiring rigor and documentation is not a foreign concept. Where does liability end? So, or begin?
Which other groups are being hardest hit?
The school facilities, people at the schools.
But I mean, the rec teams, I mean, I assume the county's going to have to have a discussion. PTOs?
I think they, each season, they will meet with them and go through that. I know that this past weekend, they were set to have some meetings. So those folks received that information already. And I, it's hard to say who's going to be hit the hardest because if you look at some of our PTOs that are very small, that don't raise a lot of money, the cost of the insurance.
Yeah, how ways to benefit.
Exactly. It's going to eat up all of their revenue. So that'll be, that'll be hard for them. It'll be hard for the rec team, for the rec boards because they haven't had that accountability.
And when we asked some questions about that, I honestly did not realize every community had a board. And when we asked some questions about that, sometimes it's kind of a one or two people kind of thing. So I think that they will be hit pretty hard as far as if the board's just one or two people.
Any more questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll recognize Dr. Heffner regarding the Award of Honor Guidelines and nomination form.
Thank you, Chairman Odom. The Alexander County Board of Education has established the Award of Honor in order to recognize those individuals who have made exceptional contributions to Alexander County schools. This award represents the highest honor that the Board of Education can bestow. Criteria for the selection of this award shall be based on exceptional contributions to the Alexander County school system or any of its individual schools in the areas of academics, athletics, administration, student achievement, or community service to the schools. The contributions may include recognition on a regional, statewide, or national level, as well as local notoriety, and shall have allowed our children the chance, not only to grow and meet their full potential, but to excel as well. The final yardstick by which all nominees shall be judged as to the merit of his or her application is the positive effect on the quality of education in Alexander County as recognized by fellow students, teachers, administrators, and the community in general. The guidelines read as follows. A committee shall be established to receive and screen recommendations for this award. Neither current Board of Education members nor current school system employees are eligible for the award. The final decision shall be made by the Alexander County Board of Education. Nominations may be made from the second week in February through the second week in March of each year. Nominations will be kept on file for up to three years. Each individual nominated must have a minimum of three letters of recommendation by non-immediate family members. The award shall be given annually at the time determined by the Board of Education. And lastly, nomination forms are available at the Alexander County Board of Education office. Any questions? And we need some nominations. We have very deserving people in this county who have been a part of this school system. And to date, unless something came in today, we have not received any nominations.
And if you would continue with your superintendent's report, please.
I certainly will. It's actually pretty short tonight. I would ask that you make sure you have marked your calendar for Friday, March twenty-second. We will be visiting and touring Bethlehem Elementary that day. We will meet in the school's office at eleven-thirty. And I have provided this information to Mrs. Frisell. And they are really looking forward to spending time with you on the twenty-second. The Facilities Committee is in the process of determining the best architect for the early college.
The Facilities Committee is in the process of determining the best architect for the Early College Building. Interviews with architectural firms have been held, and the committee is moving to the next step in this process. The group is hopeful to have a recommendation for your approval at the April meeting. The Budget Committee is scheduled to meet on Monday, March eighteenth, at five-thirty. Please note, a meeting between the School Systems Budget Committee and the Commissioners Budget Committee is to be scheduled through Rick French by April eighteenth. We are supposed to have held it by that time. Our formal request for funding is due to the county manager by April thirtieth. Also, I will be attending the North Carolina Association of School Administrators Annual Conference in Raleigh on March twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth. I will send an email reminder to all of you later in the month. And lastly, a couple of additions have been made to the strategic plan, including a picture of the Board of Education. You will be pleased. And it has been posted onto your agenda, as well as on the school system's webpage. It's a beautiful document, does a good job of telling our story and where we are planning to go in the next three years, in seven different priority areas. And I just encourage everybody to check it out. It's being shown right now on the screen, but also, it's attached into your agenda. Any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hefner. At this time, we will recognize Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, our CFO, regarding policies.
Tonight, we have five policies up for second reading. I've received no questions or comments on these policies. And I would ask that you approve it on second reading.
Okay, you have a recommendation from Ms. Mahaffey? Could I have a motion regarding these policies?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue, Ms. Mahaffey.
We have eight policies that are up for first reading this month. I'll discuss them with the principals and directors and get their input and come back next month.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Mahaffey. Okay, you should have been provided your Board of Education Committee assignments for 2018. If you have not, here is a copy. I would like to congratulate you on your appointment and look forward to great things. And now, I will entertain a motion to enter into closed session regarding General Statute one-four-three dash three eighteen point one-one, A six.
Second.
Second.
That it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.